October 18th Troy City Council Meeting. We are pleased this evening to have with us Pastor Stephen Husaba of the Northfield Hills Baptist Church, and he's going to provide us with an invocation, and that will be followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise Pastor.
Let's all bow our heads as we come before our Holy Father. Our Holy Father, you who art in heaven, we come before you with reverence and thankfulness, acknowledging you that you are the Creator of all things. And Father, we come before you to ask for wisdom for Mayor, Mayor Schilling, and for the City Council. We ask your blessings and guidance, that your Holy Spirit will guide them into the truth of what in the business of the city of Troy. We pray for everyone here tonight, Lord, that they will be blessed by your grace and by your mercy. And we pray for the city of Troy, Lord, as we all seek your face, as we humble ourselves, and we ask for your blessings and your grace and mercy. Be multiplied to our city, Lord, Father. Help us in our time of need. Guide us, guide the mayor and the city council, that they will do all things for your glory and honor in Jesus Christ. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you Pastor. May we have a roll call, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Mayor Schilling?
Here.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
Howarlac?
Here.
Kerwin?
Here.
McGuinness?
Here.
Slater?
Here.
All are present. This evening, we're going to begin with certificates of recognition and special presentations, and I'll go down to the front for the first presentation. Do you want to be looking this way or this way? Which way? This is a presentation of an award to Susan Leirstein, Purchasing Director, Julie Hamilton, and Samantha Austin, the Purchasing Department, for its eighth Achievement of Excellence in Procurement Award. Let me see if I can hold.
Okay, don't drop it.
And it's correctly heavy because it is an award that was founded in 1995 and designed to recognize organizational excellence in procurement, and it's achieved by those organizations that demonstrate excellence in procurement by obtaining a high score on a rating of a standardized criteria. The program is designed to measure innovation, professionalism, e-procurement, productivity, and leadership attitudes of the procurement function. Each year, the committee modifies the application, and the submission of requirements to meet the program goals are to recognize organizational excellence in public procurement, encourage development of excellence, provide benchmarks for continued excellence, and increase awareness of public procurement as a profession. And for those of you that have the agenda, this is in here. The program is sponsored by all types of government agencies throughout the United States. I think we should take turns holding this. The National Purchasing Institute, the Institute for Supply Management, National Institute of Governmental Purchasing, the National Association of State Procurement Officials, National Association of Educational Procurement, to name just a few. And the city of Troy has earned the 15th Annual Achievement in Excellence in Procurement Award for 2010, and is only one of six government agencies in Michigan, and one of only 56 cities nationally to receive the award. And the city of Troy has received this award for eight consecutive years, and of course that is due to our wonderful staff. And for those of you that saw the agenda and saw that our state representative, Marty Nolenberg, was to be first, we switched it because Susan Leirstein is rushing off after this to become a new grandmother, and her grandson is to be born any time now, right? And so, of course, he was gracious in saying that we should go first. So, would you like to say a few words about your department?
Yeah, briefly. I just want to obviously thank my coworkers, Julie and Samita, for all the work that they do on a daily basis. I couldn't, you know, possibly have gotten that award without them, as well as basically city management, the community at large, and city council for all of the tools that they give us to make us do our job easier and provide the vision and the fundamentals that we use every day. So, we hope we can continue to achieve it on an annual basis, and we will certainly try to qualify every year. Thank you.
Thank you. Enjoy. And next, we're going to hear from our state representative, Marty Nolenberg, and he's going to give us an update on the Michigan State Government, correct?
Well, thank you for having me. Last time I was here, we, first of all, I should thank you, thank staff, thank the citizens for allowing me to give you a brief update. The last time I was here, we hadn't quite gotten the budget done. I'm happy to say to you that we did get the budget done. Budget begins on October 1st. There's some good news and there's some bad news. The good news was done. The budget was done on time. It's a day to spare, which has been some difficulty the last couple of years because it's really gone to the midnight hour the last several years. So, I'm happy to say that we got it done early. We were also able to secure funding for infrastructure. I know that was a concern for many of you, and we did get it done. We did get the money, the state funding to match the federal dollars that, for infrastructure. Mentioned no government shutdown, no cuts to revenue sharing. That's a pretty important thing. You rely on that money, and happy to say that we were able to make that whole. More importantly, no tax increases, and I think there's, the state of Michigan has a long way to go in spending before we should even consider a tax increase. So, we were able to get a bipartisan budget done, both Republicans and Democrats in both the House and the Senate. The governor signed it into law, so it was a bipartisan, bicameral effort. Happy to say that in the budget moving forward, my pay will be cut 10%. It's something that I think us as public servants, we need to share the pain just like everybody else in the private sector. So, if we elected in two weeks, I'll be working for 10% less. Now, there's some bad news, and that is, you know, we didn't get it done soon enough. And, you know, really, it, for you folks in local units of government, you want to know what your budget is, you know, before July 1st, because that's when your budget begins. And so, I'm disappointed that it took this long, but we did get it done, and there's some work to be done about that. We also used unfortunately, a number of one-time fixes. You know, we still have the stimulus money available to us. We spent it. That money's going away next year. We did some funding shifts. We offered some tax amnesty. We, you know, and unfortunately, we borrowed the money for the state match for infrastructure. So, we have to pay that back and still have to come up with that money plus more because that state match will go up next year. So, we, in a large degree, we kicked the can down the road, and this has led us to a budget deficit next year projected at 1.6 to 1.7 billion dollars. That assumes that spending doesn't go, that doesn't go up, that tax revenues remain flat. So, I would argue that those two things will probably shift, unfortunately. Some of the problems that our states facing, we all know this, I won't dwell on it too much, but the unemployment is certainly having an effect on revenues. Also, spending continues to rise. Departments continue to overspend, and frankly, we haven't done a good enough job in penalizing those departments that overspend. You know, we should not be supplementing, you know, after the fact, additional monies if they overspend. You know, something that you wouldn't do in your business or in your household. Lot of missed opportunities. So, what I'd like to talk to you about now is, you know, what should we do and what can we expect moving forward next year? There's an Auditor General report out there that has identified over a billion dollars of waste, fraud, and abuse. We need to implement those things. And I think if our businesses want to come here and grow here, and our Michigan residents want to stay here, you know, we need to provide more certainty, and we have not done that in the budget process. There's a number of things that we can do in this regard, and I think I talked about it before, but Oakland County's been the pioneer of fiscal sound practices. They have a three-year budget. For a long time, they had a two-year budget. We need to go to a two-year budget, maybe eventually move to a three-year budget. I think it'll, it'll force the state government to always know that they have a balanced budget. The other thing that we need to do, and Oakland County had adopted this, they have, they project revenues and expenses five years out, and so they can make, they can make the adjustment that need to be made along the way. This one-year budget just is not working. I think the other thing is, you know, we need to change the fiscal year to July 1st. That's when many of the schools and local units begin their budgets, and we need to make the same shift. In fact, Michigan's one of the few states that doesn't do it on July 1st. So, this would put us in line with many, many other states, put us in line with local units of government. I know it's difficult for you to have a budget in place, not knowing what your revenues are going to be until a few months later. So, these are simple things. It's not real complicated, but I think we've got to get that in place, and that will provide, I think, the certainty that businesses are looking for. They don't know what their tax expenditures are going to be. They don't know what services are going to be cut or offered, and if we can provide that in a quicker, surer way, I think it'll send a message to the business community and to Michigan residents that we have our fiscal house in order. The last thing I want to talk about, you know, we talked about some of the expenses, and this, this report comes from the Senate Fiscal Agency. It's actually a nonpartisan agency, and while state workforce has declined by about 8,200 individuals in the last 10 years, the payroll cost has gone 20%, 21%. Retirement cost has gone up 134%. Health insurance costs have increased 65%. The total cost for state employees has increased 58% over the last decade, and corrections has the largest piece of it. So, I think, in addition to the things I just mentioned, I think you need to look at the payroll of our state employees, in particular corrections. Corrections is the $2 billion budget. It's one of the largest budgets that we have. It's growing. Our Midwest states, on a per inmate basis, were far higher, and so we need to look at that to remain in some of the cost. So, that's kind of where we are today. I'm optimistic that, you know, we really have no choice next year. We're running out of the one-time fixes to balance the budget, you know, and so I'm optimistic that we've got a plan in place to move this state forward. With that, happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Questions for Representative Marty Nolenberg? Councilwoman Beltrameen?
You mentioned bringing the fiscal year in line, and I know that there have been bills, and I think you helped science or one of them to make that happen. Is that something that can be done before the end of the year so that we don't have this fight to go through with a new legislature? Do you see any help for that?
The way, the way it would, I mean, unfortunately, nothing we can do about the 2010, 2011 year budget. And so, I think if we're going to see a change, what would happen is we'd have to adopt, adopt it next year, and it would go into effect for the 2011 fiscal year beginning on October 1st, and then it would, it would go to July 1st. So, the first year, it'd be a nine-month budget, and then each year thereafter, it'd be one year, June, July 1st to July 1st, or June 30th to July 1st.
Can we put that requirement into place so that, before the new legislature or not?
It would have to be a, we have to pass it through legislation. Unfortunately, you know, Chairman Cushingberry wasn't a big fan of it, and fortunately, he's term limited. He's term limited, so we got a new appropriations chair next year, and I think there's a willingness from people on both sides of the aisle. In fact, during testimony, overwhelmingly, there was support for it. The chairman didn't like it, and so he just wouldn't allow a vote on it. And so, we've got a new chairman, and hopefully we have, you know, open-minded people that are willing to take it up next year. In fact, that was my bill, so we introduced it, and we'll see what happens.
Thanks. Can you tell us what happened with the replacement of the 20J funds for the school district? I know that it does impact our community very much so. Can you tell us what that status is?
The, as you know, two years ago, Governor Granholm vetoed 20J funding, and, and, you know, there just isn't the support for it. There's about 30 school districts that receive 20J money, and if you look at the numbers, there's not enough representatives that can, you know, there's not enough support for it. There's just too few of us that are in favor of it, and I don't see that coming back.
Have they addressed the inequities of that position? Because that was money that was voted on by those communities for, specifically for their education, for their students, and is that going to end up being resolved then in the courts?
No, I don't see that happening. I think if you look at the outstate areas and those districts that are non-20J districts, they don't really care. They don't care about the arguments. They view it as their money. We shouldn't be getting that money, and we're simply outvoted. And it's unfortunate because when the budget was initially passed, that included 20J funding, again, it was a bipartisan, bicameral support, and the governor vetoed that specific piece, and by her vetoing that specific piece, it is almost impossible to reinsert it. And we worked like heck to try to get it reinserted. I know Senator Papa George worked very hard. I worked very hard, and we had, you know, reps from both sides of the aisle try to, to try to get it inserted in the House, and, but there's too few of us that see the value in that.
And on-
I'm not real optimistic, unfortunately.
And on the subject, I know Councilwoman Kerwin often brings this up, many of us do, and that is on revenue sharing. You know, we don't include an amount in our budget for revenue sharing from the state because many times it's been taken away, and we're down millions of dollars over the years from revenue sharing. So, what is the status on that with revenue sharing?
Well, the good news is we kept it whole this year. I think moving forward, to make it whole, to continue to make it whole, we have to look at the reforms. The Auditor General report had identified over a billion dollars of waste, fraud, and abuse, and we need to find savings in the current system in order to make revenue sharing whole. I think that's, and everything else whole for that matter. And so, if we can root out waste, fraud, abuse, get a handle on the correction system because that's a huge cost, privatizing some things in the correction systems, privatizing things in state government, and if there's, I can, I can identify over $2 billion worth of cost savings, actually more than that, and we need to just simply adopt those. And a lot of it, as you know, is in payroll, unfortunately. I own a business, any business owner will tell you that the majority of the costs are in payroll, and if you compare the state employee payroll compared to the private sector, they've gotten pay increases. Unfortunately, they got a 3% pay raise this year, and we couldn't get the votes to kill it, and that's a pay increase that we could have avoided. So, I think ultimately, we have to look at salaries and benefits for our state employees.
Councilwoman Kerwin, did I see you signaling?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just, a lot of things have been addressed, and I appreciate that, but are you seeing the praises of Oakland County's multi-year budget approach and your hopes that the state would adopt the same? When you go through communities, do you mention that Troy also has a multi-year budget? That we have a three-year budget and a five-year plan, Marty?
Yeah, well, I have two communities, Troy and Klosen, and as I talk to people, I talk about, you know, multi-year budgeting, and I think it makes a lot of sense. And I know you guys do a great job of your budget, and I appreciate that.
Well, we would hope to hear you put us right there with Oakland County when you mentioned the wonderful things that can happen from a multi-year budget. It certainly has opened our eyes and made us, I think, cognizant of the implications of the continuing down revenue.
Absolutely.
Any others? Thank you. We appreciate you coming.
Okay, thank you.
Have a good evening. That concludes those presentations, and next, well, there are no carryover items. There is a public hearing, and that is on the Community Development Block Grant 2011 application, and Tim Richnick will present for staff. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. In the past, the Community Development Block Grant applications, funding has been fairly stable the last three years, right around $169,000 to $170,000. That is down considerably, considerably from the last five or six years, and they made some restrictions recently where we could only put 20% into administration and 30% into home chore, and we've done that in this budget and left everything else for park facility programs, which we've placed some funds in the past several years. So, if there's any questions, it's a pretty basic, straightforward bit of information.
Are there questions from Council on this before we open the public hearing?
Mayor?
Councilman Howarlac?
Just a general question about the, for goodness sakes, the yard services that we provide to those in need. It's my understanding that there's a, that it's full. Is that correct? And there's a waiting list?
No. We have never had a waiting list in the city of Troy.
So, it is open?
And it is open, and, you know, people, we encourage them to call over to the Public Works Department at 524-3399, and we will give them an application and let them know what's required to be on the program.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
Any others from Council? I'll open the public hearing. Is there anyone here that wishes to speak on this item? Seeing none, then I'll close the public hearing and return to the council table for a resolution.
Madam Mayor?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
I would move the resolution as printed. Support.
Moved by Councilwoman Beltrameen, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we approve the resolution as printed. Discussion of-
Well, Madam Mayor?
Yes, Councilwoman Kerwin?
You know, just to remind you that these are eligible projects that have to do with income. So, even though someone may desire someone to clean a house or someone to have some park equipment, a lot depends upon that equipment. So, these are strictly regulated, and we're certainly grateful that they can have a long-term impact in this region of Troy.
Any other thing else? Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Similar comment. When Mr. Richnick said that we would use some of these funds for park recreational facilities, there are only certain parks that have a population that qualifies for use of these funds. So, it's not a way to keep the nature center open. It can't be used that way.
Any others? Okay, Mrs. Bartholomew, may we have the vote?
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
Yes.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Motion passes. I note on the screen that we have more than 15 people that have signed up to speak so far, and if anyone else wishes to speak in the public comments section, would they go to the screen and sign up so we could have, call you by name? Because we're over the number, I'm going to move to suspend the rules.
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilwoman Kerwin, that we move to suspend the rules. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Fleming?
No.
Howarlac?
Yes.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes. Motion passes. I move to change the time limit for speakers from five minutes to three minutes per speaker. Do we have a second?
Support.
Moved by the Chair, seconded by Councilman Slater, that we adjust the time from five minutes to three minutes per speaker. Discussion? The vote, Mrs. Bartholomew?
Councilwoman Fleming?
No.
Howarlac?
No.
Kerwin?
Yes.
McGuinness?
Yes.
Slater?
Yes.
Mayor Schilling?
Yes.
Councilwoman Beltrameen?
Yes.
Motion passes. Under the public comments section, I'll remind folks that this is on any regular business agenda item, consent agenda item, or any other item that you wish to speak on. And because of the number of people that want to speak, we will proceed again with the calling of the five names. It seems to move it along pretty efficiently. So, the first five people, if you would please line up in this order to speak. Neil Yashinsky, Judy Baker, Paul Beck, Julie Singler, and Gordon Shepke. Those five people, please. Thank you, and we'll begin with Neil.
Good evening, everyone. Mayor Schilling and council members, also distinguished city employees, and most importantly, people at home watching. I'm here to encourage people to support Proposal One. I was very disappointed, frankly, to see what happened the last time we had an opportunity to improve the funding for vital city services. Besides fire and police, I see no more vital city service than the library. I think, if you think about what it means to be a city, besides, of course, educating our children and schools, having a library is probably the best place to increase- Having a library is probably the best place to increase the value of the citizens. And so I had an opportunity. I'm a parent of Leonard Elementary, and during our parent-teacher lunch this past week, we had a speaker who is a friend, a member of the organization, a friend of the library, came and had a very compelling speech, spoke about how they've already laid off roughly a third of the members of the library staff, and how they've already made dramatic cuts. And I actually think that's a big mistake at a time like this. It's really important that we have great library services, especially for the people who are affected by unemployment or underemployment. What a great place to go to improve your skills and prepare for a job tomorrow. So for everyone who isn't decided yet, I really encourage them to look very closely at Proposal One, which is the only one that's really designed to keep our library operating as efficiently as it should be. I mean, when this comes down to it, I think it's about property values, and if we expect to, our property values to go up, we have to be seeing ourselves as one of the best cities in Michigan. I don't see how we can possibly be one of the best cities in Michigan without a great library. And so, you know, one of the great books that I took out from the library actually talked about the history of the city of Troy. And when I think of how we were, you know, before 1955, as unincorporated, what we ended up doing is losing a lot of our land to the adjacent areas before we incorporated. And one of the reasons that we did that was to remain strong. And so I think that it's essential, if we want to remain strong as a community, that we have a strong library. So again, I want to just encourage everyone to support Proposal One, and I thank you very much for your time today. Have a good day.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Judy Baker.
Hello.
Hello.
My name is Judy Baker, and I was kind of wondering how many of you have ever lived in a community that did not have a library? Not many, I bet. Well, I have, Troy, Michigan. My hometown at Clinton, Oklahoma, out on Old Route 66, had a library about the size of our used bookstore in the basement of our current library. When I came to Michigan, I lived in Royal Oak and was a cardholder there. We moved to Troy in November of '64, if you're counting, that's 46 years, and I went looking for the library and the saltwater pool here in Troy. What I found, the only thing I found, was in a little corner of the Troy High School Library with two shelves, a couple of chairs called the Friends Reading Room with maybe 50 books. Anybody here long enough to remember that? I never found the saltwater pool, but I found out where it went. In 1966 or '67, the Troy Library opened at Troy Corners and a storefront on the northeast corner. There's a bank there now. Then moved to another storefront on Rochester Road just north of Long Lake. We shared a building with a laundromat, and I think that building is now a mattress place and maybe an insurance office. It was big. It was about a quarter the size of this meeting room. We were thrilled. Let's see. I maintained my card in Royal Oak until the current building was opened in the early '70s, which is now our children's library. I took my son to the Royal Oak Library when he was in early grade school, which is what many residents of Troy will be doing if we are unable to pass Proposition One and make our library an independent public library. Imagine being unable to use computers if your internet goes out at home. If you want to buy a new refrigerator, do you take Consumers Report magazine? No local information for your kids to do reports for school and having to hit Barnes and Noble just for recreational reading, that could run into some money. Remember the wonderful programs that the Friends have financially supported for adults and kids? The computer classes, the concerts, travel programs, and summer reading programs for all. Our library has never been short of volunteers, but most jobs cannot be done by volunteers to maintain accreditation. In addition to being open 55 hours a week, a certain percentage of our staff must be degreed librarians. We need the open hours, and we need the qualified people. If our library closes...
Whoops, is that it? Can you finish up? Yes, we had to make...
Ah, I can just skip right over here. Thank you for those of you who attended the League of Women Voters Forum last Thursday. I'm sure you can catch that on reruns. Please try to understand, do your best to understand the implications of the vote you cast on November 2. Your vote will make the difference. Vote yes on Proposition One.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Paul Beck.
Counsel?
Now, since you have a business on Rochester Road, do you remember where the saltwater pool was?
Yes, I do.
At the corner of Long Lake and Rochester Road. And when I grew up in Royal Oak, I used to come to Troy to swim in the saltwater pool.
So what happened to salt and what happened to the pool?
Yes, it's where they have a shopping center there now.
Okay.
Mr. Beck? Now we'll start the class for you.
Here's the doom and gloom. The library, the dirty secret that's going around is that they're not going to be satisfied with the current building. They want a two-story building, and we're looking for funding. They were looking for funding to go to a larger one. Number one, I'm opposed to all four proposals that are submitted. I think we can cut in other areas like the transportation center. I'll bring that up because Pontiac built one about six years ago, and guess what happened to it? It's all boarded up. The other thing that I found out this evening is a lot of people think that once the transportation center is built, that we don't have any liability or funds or expenses at that point. They're totally wrong. The other thing I'd like to bring up is the efficiency contract that the council was anticipating or would like to do. We spend a half a million dollars a year on salaries and benefits from the city manager's office to do these things, and what do they do? They pass the buck and send it out to bid for a contract. I think that the city council and the city manager have to reorganize their priorities in the city, quit cutting the stuff that the people want instead of what you want. Thank you.
Okay, our next speaker is Julie Seigler.
Good evening, thank you. I'm excited. I've spent hours canvassing over the last couple weeks, talking to Troy homeowners in six precincts about Library Milage Proposal One. If the people I've talked to are a fair sample of Troy homeowners, then I can assure you that a high percentage of Troy residents are concerned about maintaining a high quality of life and high standard of education in Troy, not just for themselves, but for their community. I've been told, even by residents who are hesitant to support a new millage, that the library is important and shouldn't be closed. It seems that no one questions the value of Troy Public Library to the community now or in the future. Passing Library Milage Proposal One will ensure that the Troy community will not lose its much-loved and valued asset, the Troy Public Library. And it will allow the city council and city management to place their attention on the other city services needed by Troy homeowners. Let this election be the one that affirms the value of Troy Public Library to the community. Let this be the election where we vote yes on Library Milage Proposal One. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Before Gordon Shepke speaks, let me call the next five people, please. Tony Cruz, Tim Burns, Mike Cholli, Gerard Stager, Mary Ann Bernardi. Mr. Shepke?
Mayor and Council, thank you for the opportunity to come and address you this evening. There's been a lot of conjecture and emotion on the four ballot proposals on the November 2 ballot. Whether or not we will have a Troy library is not the real question, rather, it should be. How much are we willing to pay for the library's services, and who can run it more efficiently, a separate board or the city? Our library actually costs between $2 and $3 million a year to run. I think the budget says $2,500, $2,259,670, not $4.3 million collected by Proposal One. The museum in the historical village is added presently to the Troy Library budget, and that cost $199,773. And it costs about $18,798 for the keeping up of the grounds. All of this will be defunded if any of the proposals pass. The $2,259,670 presently appropriated is a far cry from the $4.3 million to be collected. This is a ridiculous new tax increase, not even close to being reasonable and responsible. On top, this newly-appointed library board will serve till November of 2011 and sets agendas, sets budgets, and negotiates with the city to buy back what we already control. The Troy Emergency Fund, the Troy Emergency Fund could fund the library levels for, the library at the current levels for a few years until we can come up with a more realistic, taxpayer-friendly means to operate and fund the library in Troy. Even in Troy's overall budget, there's around a 3% compensation factor that could provide additional funds. Our Troy library looks like it is being used for a political tax hostage to be used so that more discretionary money can be moved around where management wants it. The more I study this thing, the less I like it. If you figured, just, you can figure it out, just crunch the numbers, vote no. If you've already voted yes, go to the city clerk's office and change your vote. The old four-to-three council vote approving John Zerle's Option 1 or Option 2 isn't a great majority. Just like the 50s thing, this is from the 1877 old law, it doesn't really represent a cross-section of voter approval that put these ridiculous board proposals on the ballot. Study and crunch the numbers, and you'll vote no. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tony Cruz.
Good evening, Mayor. Ladies and gentlemen of city council and staff, my name is Tony Cruz, and I've been a resident of Troy for over 17 years. I'd like to make a few remarks to place this library issue in a more accurate context. To start, this isn't a library issue at all. At issue is your lack of desire to manage public resources, period. Unfortunately, some people who don't mind seeing property taxes take a jump in an already faltering economy are very talented at the art of using emotion to cloud the minds of less astute taxpayers. So many of us have already taken major hits on our pay and benefits and are fortunate to have employment at all. Our city manager, however, seems unable to persuade the people under his watch to come anywhere near the compromises his benefactors have endured. In the meanwhile, we pay our already steep property taxes and school fees faithfully. Is that enough? No. In a very craven manner, some of you hide behind the naivete of the so-called friends and their successful brainwashing of many emotionally guided souls, and then say to the citizens, "This millage wasn't our idea." Well, Madam Mayor, for an idea that isn't yours, you and your council supporters have done a fine job of nurturing it and owning it. The proverbial egg does not belong to the hen that laid it, it belongs to the hen that incubates it. When this millage passes in November, what's next? Will a specially-appointed council in charge of public safety emerge? Who's going to own the idea of a future millage to save the police and fire departments? Dare any of us reject the next millage and the next one, and the one after that? If we do, we must be anti-public safety or anti-Troy, right? Wrong. We love our police and firefighters. We love our library, believe it or not. We love our fair city. Right now, however, we're not very enamored with the marginal job many of you have done to adjust for a changing economy. Every town has a public library, but not every town has its own museum, nature center, multiple golf courses, et cetera. We have deer from the nature center spilling at the Coolidge and getting injured or killed almost monthly. Just this past Saturday, there were three deer on the grounds of Bowlin Park. You claim we have no money in our budget to sustain the current library, yet we have the money to pay for moving Barnard House down Laverneoy to its new location at the museum. We have money to contribute over 30% to a $9.5 million federal boondoggle for a train station in a different city. We have millions to tear up and repave perfectly good roads just because the federal government pays the lion's share. Well, the question then becomes, who do you think funds the federal government? I'll tell you who. It's people like us. Please stop taking us for the suckers we can't afford to be and the fools we're not. I implore you to keep the library open, keep this fine institution open by managing within your means, and stop supporting attempts by misinformed groups to raise taxes. Thank you very much.
Next, Mike Cholli?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Mayor Schilling, members of the council, and staff members. My name is Mike Cholli, a Troy resident of 40 years, and I am here to speak about an important issue, namely the millage for the Troy Library. More specifically, I'm here to speak about a problem, the cause of the problem, and a possible solution for the problem. During the past five months that I have been campaigning for the Library Millage Proposal, I have encountered many Troy voters that, who were confused about how to vote on the four Library Millage Proposals. Before I continue, I would like to state a classical definition of a problem, which is a deviation of a standard of performance to accomplish an objective, or in simpler words, an action that does not meet our expectation to accomplish an objective. The voter's expectation is to find one millage for one and only Troy Public Library, and we find instead four millage proposals on the ballot. The voter wonders whether to vote for one or all four millages. No instruction is provided to vote for not more than one of the proposals, which further confuses the voter. But that's another problem for some other time, perhaps. The resulting confusion is the problem and requires a solution. Proposal One is the only one of the four proposals where the budget amount was researched and developed by the Friends of the Troy Public Library and is approved and promoted by the citizens to save the Troy Public Library. The other three proposals were placed on the ballot deliberately to confuse the voter and to undermine the vote for Proposal Number One. We need to vote for only one proposal, for one Troy Public Library, and that proposal is Proposal Number One. The cause of the confusion problem is listing of the three other Library Millage Proposals, and the solution, of course, is to, to the problem, is to remove the cause by voting no for the other three proposals. Finally, to those voters who do not agree to pay a tax to fund the library, please think about this. Someone paid the tax to fund the library you attended when you were younger, during your school years and working years. Now is the time to return the deed to thousands of Troy students and other daily users. Now is the time to vote yes for Proposal Number One and no for the other three proposals which caused the confusion problem. Only a yes vote for Proposal Number One and a no vote for the other three will keep our only library open after July 1, 2011. And that is the truth. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Tim Burns. According to the sign-up sheet.
Fast bedtime, so we're going to be really, really quick tonight. I'm Tim Burns, I'm your county commissioner, and I have two hats on tonight. First of all, I want to remind everybody that the Troy Community Coalition, which is our local anti-drug and alcohol abuse agency, well, actually, it's a nonprofit agency, is having its big fundraiser next Thursday, Celebrity Night Dinner. The co-chair and celebrity chair is Mark Ridley, who owns the Comedy Castle, and the entertainment is going to be one of the best local comedians from his comedy circle from the clubs. And you can go to the... And you can go to troycoalition.com for more information on the tickets, they're next week. But the Coalition had a large federal grant expire, you only had it for so long, and then, uh, it went to another organization, and, uh, so it needs these revenues to be able to keep providing the programs, uh, to provide these anti-drug, uh, programs in our schools. Uh, if you can't make the event and wanna help out, we also have a Camaro auction, it's a hundred dollars per ticket, and we're only selling a thousand, uh, tickets, and you have to buy those before the Celebrity Night Dinner, because the auction's gonna pull a ticket out there, and, uh, someone's gonna drive away that night with a nice new, uh, sports car, so, uh, go to troycoalition.com. Uh, next, as your county commissioner, I did wanna note that, uh, you know, one of the things I've been proud of during my term is, is that I've worked to reduce our budget, keep it efficient, and we've had four balanced budgets without raising taxes, but we've also reduced the size of the government for the county by forty-five million dollars from before I took office to now. But one of the things that I did was not just say, "Well, let's cut, cut, cut." You have to be smart about your cuts, you need to do, cut things that are, are efficient, improve things to make them more efficient, and sometimes that means investing within your community. And, uh, so when I went through the budget, I didn't just look at numbers, I looked at the actual services that they were providing, the departments provide, and I looked to see, you know, what might actually help improve, help us get more out of this hole we're in right now with the economy, you know, what are luxuries that we can put aside, and, uh, what are things that maybe should just stay the way they are. And unfortunately, I found one of Oakland County's dirty secrets when I was going through the departments, and that was that, uh, the residents of Troy have been double-dipped by Oakland County for, for years to pay for animal control services. Essentially, what happens is the county, uh, pays about a hundred and eighty-seven million dollars for, uh, or, I'm sorry, one point eight, 1.87 million dollars. Uh, that was a large number, a little low, less, but 1.87 million, uh, for, uh, animal control services that cities like Rochester Hills, uh, Independence Township, Novi, get absolutely free, while for the same services, the City of Troy contracts for that and pays it, pays a, a fee for those services. So essentially, we're paying for animal control services for other cities and not for ourselves. What we're doing is have a plan, we have a meeting on Thursday with the city management to give these services, uh, for free to Troy residents, so they're not being double-dipped anymore. So my time's expired, I just wanna say that I am up for reelection in two weeks, I'm the Democratic candidate on the ballot, I'll be at the bottom of the ballot. It's been a privilege to, uh, serve the community for the last four years, and, uh, I think I have more to offer, and I appreciate the opportunity to, uh, keep serving the fine residents of Troy, and hope we can count on your vote. Again, Tim Burns, Democratic candidate, November 2nd. Thank you. Say bye, Maggie.
Maggie did well.
You say bye?
Bye, Ma. Bye-bye.
All right. Time for bed. We'll see everyone later.
Mr. Stager is our next speaker. Good evening.
Okay. Thank you, Madam Mayor, members of council. Sometimes you hear inspiring things, and I heard one last year here at a city council meeting from former Councilman Eisenbacher. He referred to a Troy organizational chart, and he said at the top of the chart are the people of Troy. The people of Troy are above the city council, above the city departments, they're at the top. And you can see Mr. Eisenbacher's point in our city charter and code. It allows citizens to override, so to speak, a decision made by the city council if they feel it's a bad decision. That's why we should support the library ordinance petition that is promoted by a group called Friends of the Troy Library with no new taxes, and vote no on the millage increases, which are expensive and won't keep the library open. The library-millage proposals are from an old 1877 law, and they're designed for communities without a library. And there's a fatal flaw in this old 1877 law in Section 10A. Each millage proposal references Section 10A, each millage proposal will be controlled by Section 10A. And it says that, once the new library board is in place, it cannot instruct a city council to raise taxes or, or to assess taxes unless they do it, quote, "on or before the first Monday in September." Troy mails out its tax bills in July, it's too late, it's October now, the election will be in November. The library-millage increases will not work, they will keep the library closed for at least one full year. Again, the library board cannot request the city council to assess any tax until July of 2012, because we're past the first Monday in September. They'll tell you that the Friends of the Troy Public Library, which is a charitable 501(c)(3) group, supports the millage. Well, that's not exactly true. The general membership of the library, including myself, were not even informed of this process until they made the decision to go ahead with the ballot proposal. Some of us learned about it by reading it in the newspaper. They did not bring us into the process, a small people, group of people put this together and put on the ballot with only fifty signatures, a fraction of a percentage point of the population of Troy. It's a bad law. The new li- that, if taxes are increased, the new library authority would get money, the library will not get any money. The new library authority will not own the building, will not own the furnishings or books or materials, they'll either have to build a new library or negotiate for the current one from the City of Troy. The city manager pointed out, this hasn't taken place yet, it would take place after the election, and city council can do or charge whatever they want. We might have to pay for the library twice, and indeed, in the Oakland Press and Sanity, some people supporting the millage are saying they want a second library built, and a lady from the library system of Rochester said, "You can eventually do that with your millage, because it will be so much more than what your library currently spends." If you're concerned about the library, please vote no for these millages, they won't work. We weren't consulted in the Friends of the Library, not the whole membership, they're a bad idea, they'll be very expensive, and I thank you. Thanks, Madam Mayor, and members of the council.
Mrs. Bernardi, before you st- you can come up, but before you start to speak, I'm gonna call the next five people, please. Wayne Chu, Io Zoo, Erin Green, Rhonda Hendrickson, and Kim Yanshinchin. Mrs. Bernardi?
Thank you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor and council. The city manager has a proposal on tonight's, uh, study session, which, in which she's recommending decreasing the number of, uh, city charter committee members from a seven to five members. And, um, I would like to note that the number of members was increased from five to seven, I believe it was in 1961, by a unanimous vote of the city council. I urge you to maintain the seven-member, uh, member, uh, number on that committee. It is really impossible to believe that decreasing by two members would have any budgetary effect at all. Moreover, the fewer the members on that committee, the more power is concentrated in fewer members. And, um, I believe that the result of that would lead to a less democratic process for the citizens of Troy. This is an important committee, and I think, uh, we need the seven members, just like we need seven members of council. I think we have seven members of council, not five, not four, not three, not two, not one, because we believe in democracy and we believe in an equal distribution of power in very important issues, and this is an important committee, so thank you.
Thank you. Yes, our next speaker is Wayne Chu.
Hi, uh, good evening, Mayor, good evening, uh, council. Uh, I, I don't have fancy numbers or have a political agenda with me today, I'm, I'm just a student, a learner, someone seeking education and knowledge. Being a student at Troy High, the library has been a great place for many students. Students all the time, they go there to do, uh, projects, uh, they go together to study for tests, to meet for clubs, et cetera, and, and even more. Now, the comedian Drew Carey, uh, some of you might know, he used to say, "I used to go to the library all the time when I was a kid. As a teenager, I got a book on how to write jokes at the library, and that in turn made me a great comedian." Yeah, and he's a great comedian today, and the library has been a great place for people to start with their dreams and, um, uh, to help and, uh, make those dreams happen, uh, just in, in the, uh, example of Drew Carey. Uh, anyway, um, for me and many students, it is a place of tranquility and of wisdom, a haven for all knowledge seekers to grow. It's been a pity that Troy High Library, the one that's in Troy High, has had to cut its times, and now during lunches and after school, uh, Troy High students are not allowed to be in the library simply because of budget cuts. And now, the Troy Public Library also, um, is being shut down now, and it's just, um, it's, uh, it's a, it's a great pity. And the Troy Public Library represents more than just a nice building for books, I mean, it represents education, the spirit of democracy, and also the excellence of our community. Uh, the public library is more than a repository of books, it's a mysterious, wondrous place with the power to change lives. A quote from the Chicago Tribune Literary Editor, Elizabeth Taylor. Now, Troy's a great city, I love this city, it'll always be my home. I've been fortunate enough to be able to experience the library for, uh, thirteen years of my life, and the great things that Troy has had to offer. The Troy Public Library has always been there for me. Now, the Troy Public Library is being shut down, and it's a pity that the thousands and the new generation cannot experience the things that I've experienced. Now, it's a pity that I can't bring the thousands of fellow students that also have a voice, that wanna come here and express how we all feel about the closure of the library. We're all greatly surprised that some people are against the education for the future of Troy and for the students of Troy. I hope people will support the proposal, uh, Proposal Number One, in fact, and, um, in saving the well-being of the community and the excellence of the City of Troy. Uh, thank you very much, and, uh, please support Proposal One. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Io Zoo. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, council members. Um, I am another student representative, and I just, um, hope to give a student perspective on, uh, this issue of the library. This fall, I entered the Troy Public Library as a student, seventeen-year-old student, hoping to find some solace to study my intensive physics C test. What I found was quite different and amazing. Around me, in the cafe, adult section, children's section, the bookstore, I found people, people of all ages, ethnicities, cultures. It was the people of Troy gathered for the united purpose of education, meeting, and peace that could only be found in a library. As a high school senior, I've accumulated a plethora of such memories through my school years. The library served as a sanctuary for my education, and I do not wish it to deny this to future generation of high schoolers, thousands of high schoolers after me. So thus, it is my wish that the community, uh, that community would show its support and vote for Proposal Number One. Thank you, Mayor and Chair. Council.
Our next speaker is Erin Green.
Counsel, Mayor, um, I'm back again. I know it's, it's getting a little bit old, uh, both sides of this debate, but, uh, it's important to all of us. Those of us on the side, um, of the library who, who do recognize the, the importance of Proposal One, uh, just, we just wanna hammer that home, because we hear the other side talking about how much they love the library and how much they really care, but we've had speakers this evening saying that it's not about the library, it's about fiscal responsibility. Those of us who support the library are absolutely for fiscal responsibility. There's nobody here who's going to say, "I want my taxes higher just because I feel like it." There's nobody here who is going to suggest that, uh, everybody in this room should get a yacht. This is not the Oprah Show. There's no reason for anything like that. But the library itself is very important to this community. The library is very important to every community. We've heard from speakers this evening who talked about, uh, their lives and, and how it's affected them, either from a young age or throughout their entire lives. And is that an emotional response? Yes, it is. However, in order to support this library, because it is not currently supported in the budget, in order to maintain fire and safety services, you need to vote yes on Proposal One in order to maintain the library services, in order to keep both your safety and the library, to educate your children, to keep going forward. Don't make cuts now in the short term, don't vote no to save yourself a little bit of tax money, that's three tanks of gas. Is that a lot? Yes, it is. But if you do that now, that could be your children's tanks of gas that they're not able to get because they're not as well-educated, they don't have as, uh, a good a background, and they haven't been able to get into the college that they want. Uh, for you, that could be something as simple as looking at an e-resource, or if you're a student, uh, looking at an electronic database to try to fix your car, you could save hundreds of dollars by not going to a repair shop and buying your own. Could be something as easy as that, or it could be something like home research, looking in the City of Troy, figuring out whether you wanna run for council, whatever job that might be, you're able to do that because the City of Troy has a library. In order to maintain that library and to keep your safety services, you have to vote yes on one of these proposals. Which one? Proposal One, because if you don't, that splits the vote. So vote yes on Proposal One, keep fire, keep safety, and keep our library. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Rhonda Hendrickson. Good evening.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor, council. First, before I start on my paper, I just wanna address a couple of things. The idea that an 1877 law is no longer good is a very interesting point, since we all still follow the Constitution, which was written in 1787. So since we all love our Constitution and we think that's an important document, I think that 1877 law is not out of line, and I know that there are a lot of other older laws on our books that we all follow. So that really isn't a relevant point to this issue. The other thing I wanted to mention is that, as a member of the Friends of the Troy Public Library, we did hold public forums, we hold three, we held three of them back in May on this very subject, and we invited all the membership to come. If it wasn't an interesting topic for people at that time, they may not have attended, but I can tell you with quite certainty that we did hold three public forums that were very well-attended. Our general annual meeting in, in particular was attended by about 200 people. So that is not the case. We did hold forums, and we did talk about this to our membership. We are not a misinformed group, and we are not brainwashers. We are people who have done our homework, and we are looking into this issue, we have been for the last seven months. It's a very important issue, and we continue to look into it and we continue to study it. As a person with a master's in library science, I can tell you that one of the most important things for people is, when you're a librarian, is information and citing your sources. It is very important to, to cite your sources and show where you got your information when you're talking about it. It's, it's not enough to just throw information out there and not back it up with inform- with, with sources. So I think it's very important that we get some facts out here. We cannot, we cannot compare a library that's been cut 30%, 50%, 1.4 million dollars to the library that we would like to have, which is just a library with Saturdays and programming back. That's all that we're looking for here. We're not, I don't know where this big secret building is, but nobody, but nobody on the side of the Proposal One has said anything about building a two-story building. There is no big secret, there's no hidden agenda there, there is no money to buy a building, I can promise you that. So that isn't part of anything. Now, to my remarks. The citizens of the Troy Public, Friends of the Citizens to Save the Troy Public Library are a grassroots organization, and we are supported by the Friends of the Troy Public Library, which is a volunteer group that's donated time and resources for more than 50 years. It has been said that democracy is not a spectator sport, and in two weeks, we will make a decision that will have a significant impact on our children, our community, and our future. In thirty-four weeks, the Troy Public Library will close, and I am urging all voters to vote yes on Proposal One, the only proposal on the ballot that was designed to prevent the library com- from closing. If Proposal One fails and the library closes, Troy will be a less attractive place for families and businesses to locate, you can be sure of that. And at a time when our property values in Troy are declining, failure to invest in our future will only further hurt our community. One hundred percent of the funds for library, will go for library services and operations, and by law, this independent board of citizens will be elected to ensure transparency, accountability at the library. The proposal asks for voter approval for .9885 mils for ten years. It will cost the homeowner of a home with a taxable value of a hundred thousand dollars, ninety-nine dollars a year, less than ten dollars a week, less than the cost of a non-resident card in a neighboring library.
Mrs. Hendrickson, I'd have to-
Oh, I'm sorry, was that you? I thought that was a phone.
There was a phone, but the, this also was here-
Forgive me.
And it's because you, you, before starting your comments, you, uh, wanted to speak about some of the other comments-
That's okay, I thought it was a phone behind me, I didn't pay, I couldn't see it, sorry. But thank you very much.
Thank you. Uh, before our next speaker, before Kim starts, let's have the next, uh, five speakers come, please. Linda Kima, Jeannie Stein, Sharon McDonald, Leonard Kraus, and Thomas Burke. Kim, good evening.
Good evening. Without libraries, what have we? We have no past and no future. That is a quote from Ray Bradbury, the science fiction writer probably best known for his novel Fahrenheit 451. This is a third-
This is a third City Council meeting I have attended in as many weeks, and I have some observations I'd like to share. First, most of the citizens of the city of Troy do not want the public library to close. And second, none of us is happy at the prospect of higher taxes. But now it's a question of priorities. Some of us have prioritized having a quality library above paying a higher tax rate, while others have determined that keeping our current millage is of greater importance. Earlier this year, representatives of the Friends of the Troy Public Library attended the city's budget study sessions and made the same request at every meeting: Please find a way to keep our library open. However, the library was not included in the budget and is now slated to close. Given this situation, the Friends of the Library, and then the Citizens to Save the Troy Public Library, reviewed Michigan law, consulted experts in library issues, and determined that the only way to keep our library was to take it independent. This is the intent of Proposal One on the November ballot. In this effort, we were seeking an up or down vote by the community on the question of funding a library. Unfortunately, our voters do not have this simple choice. We have a confusing set of proposals on the November ballot and another petition circulating on the issue of library funding. Andrew Carnegie stated, "It was from my own early experience that I decided there was no use to which money could be applied so productive of good to boys and girls who have good within them and ability and ambition to develop it as the founding of a public library. Let's not put at risk this institution that is so productive of good to boys and girls. Ensure we continue to support our library. Vote yes on Proposal One." Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker, Linda Kaima.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I wish I could take credit for the writing of this, but it was a speech recently made on the importance of libraries. We owe our thanks to librarians and the people who support libraries, the men and women who sit on library boards, community officials, those who volunteer at libraries, and the patrons who make use of the library's wonders. They are the unsung heroes of civilization. These people, in their quiet way, have maintained one of civilization's greatest traditions, the gathering and dissemination of hard-won human wisdom. In this way, libraries have been and always will be the engines of civilization's progress. In fact, without libraries, such progress would be impossible, especially in the modern era. These days, we all depend upon libraries, whether we know it or not. Books are the gateway to a better tomorrow. For books challenge us to use our minds, to find better ways of conducting ourselves and managing the great problems of human existence. In the library, we can find the resources to examine and confront our most difficult social problems. Libraries are as crucial to our survival as schools, hospitals, farms, or any other institution you can name, because they ensure that we need not learn the same lessons over and over again from scratch. Unlike our Stone Age ancestors, we can learn from the experience of those who came before, and that gives us a remarkable power to change and grow and do things better. But sometimes, we take libraries for granted. Well, we can't afford to do that anymore. Libraries don't just preserve the wisdom of the past, they contain the seeds of a better future. In an age where giant media conglomerates try to shape our opinions with soundbites, we need books more than ever before. And because books are so expensive these days, libraries have become even more important to ensure that reading doesn't become a hobby for the rich. Without true literacy, democracy itself becomes impossible. The real battle of the 21st century, I believe, will be between those who would use ignorance to serve their own greed and those who selflessly open the doors of knowledge to anyone who cares to listen. By building a culture that venerates the principles of literacy, we may yet save ourselves from a grim future of literacy haves and have-nots. Libraries are the cornerstone of civil society, of the democracy we've come to cherish. We must not allow them to crumble into disuse. Any chance we have to make a positive difference, as you have, by supporting the library should be taken. It is a blessing. And to quote from, I believe it was Karen Hunt in a recent letter to the editor, "There is no Santa Claus. Libraries cost money." So please, vote yes on Proposal One and no on the others. Thank you.
Jeannie Stein, former mayor, former City Councilwoman. Nice to see you.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. I've always felt that the library was really the heart of the community. It's where people of all ages, from small children to seniors, come together to read, to study, to job-seek, to share learning experiences. It is vitally important to our diverse culture and to the economic stability of our community that our library remain open. When the voters of Troy go to the polls on Tuesday, November 2nd, to mark their ballots and decide the future of our library, they must understand that Proposal One is the only proposal designed to prevent the library from closing next July 1st. Proposal One on the ballot has brought great numbers of people together to work for a common cause, people of different creeds, cultures, talents, occupations, and dreams for a better tomorrow, all working to spread the word about Proposal One, sacrificing time and energy to keep the library open. They recognize the value of our library to this community, and their hard work must be rewarded by a strong voter turnout, a voter turnout that votes yes on Proposal One and no on the other proposals. Proposal One will prevent the Troy Library from closing, a victim of city budget cuts, no funds for library services after July 1st. Proposal One funds will be used 100% for library services, operations, and restoring ours. Proposal One will cost no more than $99 a year for a property with a taxable value of $100,000, less than $2 a week. One needs to look at his tax bill to find the taxable value. Proposal One will establish an independent public library administered by a six-member board of our peers, nonpartisan unpaid citizens of Troy, voted into office by us, the public. By Michigan law, the boards can't issue bonds or raise taxes, therefore, the millage can't exceed the amount approved by the voters. As one who has lived in Troy for 50 years, I have seen how beautifully our library has served Troy citizens. I've seen families discover the power of reading and learning together. As a former teacher and a school counselor, I've seen students succeed in the classroom and beyond, thanks to homework assistance available in the library. During the nine years that I was mayor, I frequented the library, particularly when I was preparing my state-of-the-city addresses. The library was a vital resource for me, and I can't imagine not being able to continue to use it. On Tuesday, November 2nd, the only responsible avenue to take to keep the library open is to vote yes for Proposal One and no on the other proposals.
Go ahead, finish.
If voters are unable to vote at their respective precincts for whatever reason, they can go to the city clerk's office and vote absentee. Be sure to let your voice be heard.
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Sharon McDonald.
Good evening.
Good evening.
I can back that up. I was at that meeting for Citizens to Save the Public Library in May, and I squeezed into a seat and got a free cookie. I had never heard before then of the Friends of the Library, or of Rhonda Hendrickson, or of, that there was such a thing as a library attorney who was there to answer many questions for us that night. And when I heard about the idea to create an independent library, I thought it was brilliant. Most other cities our size, the vast majority of them have them, and I thought it would settle the library issue once and for all. It would, our library would have a separate, untouchable funding for 10 years and couldn't be made into a political pawn. And because my taxes have gone down $800 in the last two years, the $112 it would cost my family to keep our library open is a bargain. But I didn't think that this would become so highly politicized. I didn't think some political operatives would copy and paste the exact language from Prop One and put it on three more proposals, simply to anger and confuse voters and to suppress the vote. And I know that's true, because I've been canvassing, and people are angry, they want to know why there are these four crazy proposals. So I understand that some people genuinely don't want Proposal One to pass, and I can respect their opinions when they have their facts right. But then there are others who simply want to play a political game, and to me, this isn't a game, nor should it be some philosophical exercise in anti-tax ideology. This is simply a vote on whether or not we want to keep our library. And my kids, my husband, and I want to keep Troy Public Library open. I also know many people who voted no in the February millage election but are voting yes for Proposal One. Reasonable bloggers who voted no in February are saying vote yes for Proposal One. We want to pass Proposal One because it's just for the library, and we know 100% of the funds capped at under a mil for 10 years will go directly to the library. It's good for Troy. My neighbor told me that his grown son is moving back to Michigan, but told him not to bother looking for a house in Troy for him. He said, "I have a family, Dad, I can't move into a city that may not have a library." That is a true story. If Troy becomes less attractive place for families, our property values will suffer, our schools will face lower enrollment, which will also negatively affect our kids' education. I ask Troy citizens who care about the future of our city, our property values, our schools, and our library to please vote yes on Proposal One. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Leonard Kraus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for allowing me the time to-
Want to adjust the mic up a little bit?
Oh, the mic, okay.
There you go.
Usually, I'm too loud. I'm out of hearing, and I talk too loud. But anyway, I've lived in Troy for 23 years, and I've been proud of Troy. When I tell people that I live in Troy, I tell them that with pride. I'm proud of the library. And now, I am shocked to hear that the library has a chance of closing. And with the, well, you know, Claussen is building onto their library, doubling the size, Southfield remodeled theirs, Roylo remodeled theirs, and Troy is going to close the library. And, you know, educated people don't want to move into a community without a library. It's that simple. They value education. In the communication age, a city without a library is a second-class city. And I fear that with the current economic conditions and the four confusing proposals on the ballot, it might fail. In that event, the council has a very difficult decision to make. And if they make the decision to close the library, they are sentencing Troy to a second-class bedroom district. Thank you very much.
Next, we'll hear from Thomas Burke.
I ask all the citizens of Troy to please wake up and vote no on all four of these library proposals. Let me give you a couple examples of why this is bad policy. Council, either in last meeting or the meeting before that, had a number of proposals presented by city management that basically came from businesses and asked this. It said, "We're business in the city, we love Troy, we want to come here with new equipment and bring more employees here. We just have one problem: Your taxes are too high. If you cut our taxes and give us a big abatement, we'll bring more equipment, we'll expand our facility, and we'll hire more employees." And council thinks that's a great thing, and so by a substantial majority approves those proposals. At the same time, these library proposals put a significant tax increase on all businesses of Troy. So the one hand giveth, the other hand takes away. We give to a few that can control their destiny, and we slap down all the other Troy businesses and make it more expensive to be a businessperson in Troy. That makes no sense whatsoever. I was at a couple of those early forums, too. I don't remember anybody from the Friends of the Library ever asking whether the people who were in attendance were in favor or opposed to this, these proposals. They told them what was already happening, because it only took 50 signatures and they'd already collected them. They'd already met with, this was a done deal by the time these forums took place. The library, before any cuts were made to it, cost $3.6 million to operate. The budget gets increased to $4.3 million. The citizens, please do not give council and city management a get-out-of-jail-free card and let them pawn the library off on a new bureaucracy that by law has a two-mil cap. It cannot be raised to $2 million without voter approval, but ask yourself what the cap is on the city of Troy and how much the city of Troy levies. It managed to get right to the max. Lastly, I ask you this: When you ask city management, "Can't we have a library and fit it into the budget?", the answer always comes back, "Not without cutting police." That is a ridiculous statement. I ask this: There is a list that is floating around Troy that has 20 of the 20 highest-paid employees in Troy on it. I'm not suggesting that anyone is paid inappropriately. I'm not suggesting that those people could be eliminated. But you're talking about eliminating an entire branch of operations in the city of Troy. Can you honestly, as council people, look at that list of 20 people and say, "In drastic economic times, there is not a single person on there whose job could be eliminated, consolidated two positions into one?" I'm not going to name names, but you cannot ask yourselves that question and answer no. There are people that could be eliminated off there. There is cost savings in that 20, there is cost savings substantially in the rest of Troy operations, but that man cannot do it. He's, when you ask him to do a Farinac-